Everybody. Um, Clark, will you call the roll?
Corliss.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Morales.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Dead.
Here.
Willis.
Here.
All present.
Thanks. We've got minutes.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the evening minutes on April 29th, 2025.
Second.
Motion a second, clerk?
Dead.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Madam Mayor, yes, excuse me.
All in favor, motion carries.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the minutes for the evening meeting on May 13th, 2025.
Second.
Clark?
Dead.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Two second.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right. Next up, we've got the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second, clerk?
Dead.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
And now ordinances on second reading.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that all ordinances on second reading be read by number and title only and filed for the third reading calendar.
Without objection.
ORD dash 18 dash 25, an ordinance describing the exterior boundaries and removing certain properties related to the U stick ditch lateral from the Boise Municipal Irrigation System, directing the Boise City Clerk to report a certified copy of this ordinance in the office of the A County Reporter and providing an effective date.
Thank you. And now third reading.
Madam Mayor, I move that further reading of ORD dash 16 dash 25 be dispensed with and the record reflect that they have been read the third time in full.
Second.
We have a motion a second, clerk?
Dead.
Yes.
Willis.
Corliss. Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. ORD dash 16 dash 25, an ordinance CAR 24 dash 00006 for property located at 1511 to 1519 South Luntner Avenue, 405 to 517 West Island Street, and parcel R 5315010250, Boise, Idaho, A3706, amending zoning classifications of the city of Boise City to change the classification of real property particularly described in section one of this ordinance and adjacent rights away from R dash 1C residential traditional to R dash 2 residential compact, setting forth a reason statement in support of zone change and providing an effective date.
Thank you. And next up, we have a whole bunch of special business.
Madam Mayor, we need to approve the ordinance.
Oh, sorry. So excited about the special business.
Madam Mayor, I move that ORD dash 16 dash 25 be approved.
Second.
Do we have a motion a second, clerk?
Dead.
Yes.
Willis.
No.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Five in favor, one opposed, motion carries.
And now special business. First, I'm forwarding the appointment of Jimmy Hallie Burton, Councilmember Hallie Burton, to the CCDC Board of Commissioners for a five-year term that will end May 2030.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent for the appointment of Jimmy Hallie Burton to the Capiti City Development Corporation Board of Commissioners for a five-year term ending May 2020, May 2030.
Second.
Without objection. All right. You're official. I really appreciate your willingness to serve. You represent an area that encompasses the State Street District and look forward to having you on that board.
Um, yes, absolutely. Looking forward to serve as well. This is usually when I would be telling somebody in the audience, thank you for jumping onto an extra volunteer opportunity and for, uh, doing some of this work. The reality is that I've gotten to work with, uh, um, CCDC a lot, uh, for over a decade on so many projects and to be able to continue to work with them in this capacity is extremely exciting for me, especially some of the stuff that's going on on State Street and some of the other projects. So I appreciate the appointment and I appreciate everybody's support.
Thank you. Um, and now we have reappointments of Brigadier General Shannon Smith, Meg Carlson, Russ Westerberg, Kerry Westergaard, and John Cunningham. All reappointments, the Airport Commission for, for a three-year term, for each of them having a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Madam Mayor, we're gonna do these in one fell swoop.
Yep.
I'd ask unanimous consent for the reappointment of Brigadier General Shannon Smith, Meg Carlson, Russell Westerberg, Kerry Westergaard, and John Cunningham to the Airport Commission for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Without objection. I want to thank all these members of the Airport Commission. This is a, this is unusual that we would have so many with the same term and it's just the way the commission at the airport has worked historically, just from a timing perspective. Um, so each of these folks have, have all served some for multiple terms, really appreciate their service and happy to see them back. Um, and with that, we will move back into, uh, budget planning workshop number one presentations. Up next, Mark Niemeyer. As he's coming up, this is Mark's final first budget workshop presentation as well. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counsel, good afternoon. Uh, let me just say in honor, Doug, it's really an honor to actually follow him. Uh, what a pro. And so I'm gonna ask you for a few memos though, as time goes on. I like that. So Madam Mayor, Counsel, I am here to talk, uh, again about four-person staffing. I only have three slides. These will probably be familiar to you. Um, but certainly here to answer any questions that you may have as we move forward. So looking at four-person staffing as I presented about a month ago, the importance of it, there is a national standard out there. We certainly are trying to achieve that standard. Uh, and with that, there is a, an article and, and language in the current collective labor agreement. It's been in there quite a while, continues to be in there today, really saying that the city and, and the local and the fire department will try to achieve this standard over time and put together a plan to implement that. Uh, we know that it has proven impact. I, I presented this to you as well. Uh, when it comes to our ability to perform, and that's really what this is about, on, on the fire ground, on emergency calls, they have done studies, it's about 25% faster four-person staffing versus three on a fire ground. That's just getting the work done, those, looking at those essential tasks. From a strategy perspective, uh, I was really proud and honored, uh, last time I was here to talk about our methodology. Uh, and I talked a little bit about my initial perception of how we're gonna approach this when I first got hired and where we are today. And I, I believe that methodology is very, uh, very real and it's very articulate. Meaning, we can look at the different data points that help tell the story and really tell an objective story about where the next station should be based on several factors, and I presented those, uh, last time. And then aligning that strategy to the long-range, uh, financial vision, uh, that we know that that's a challenge. And so I think working with Eric, the mayor's office, how do we make this happen? Uh, we heard this morning about the revenues. So how do we make it happen? And certainly trying to play our part in working with the city, uh, um, looking forward. From a cost perspective, I brought this slide last time. This is to add four-person staffing to one station. So that's the addition of three firefighters. Uh, there is some initial one-time monies, uh, that are expended when we do this. It's about $73,000 total in capital that pays for the turnouts, the radios, some of the capital equipment that is needed. We have a recruit academy that those firefighters, uh, go through. It's about 12 weeks. And then they get out on line during their probationary time to finish out that probationary period. Uh, and then we have the ongoing cost. Uh, that's the personnel, fully loaded salaries and benefits, uh, and ongoing M and O of 517,000. You, so you can just see there. And at any point, if you need me to stop, just, uh, raise your hand, I'll, I'll certainly stop. But that is the cost. I know there was some questions last time I was here. Uh, and I hope we didn't confuse you about every few years we had in our plan to add also a second set of firefighters, another three firefighters. And we call those the float firefighters, and those are added staff on each shift. So when we have vacancies occur through vacation time, sick leave, workers comp, those float firefighters fill in. So we don't have to use overtime dollars to backfill those positions. Uh, when we looked and ran an analysis of how many stations being added to four-person staffing would we go through before we have to add another set of float personnel? And really that was driven by the current collective labor agreement. So in that CLA, there's a formula that says how many firefighters are allowed off on each shift for vacation. We're not talking about sick leave or work comp, but just for vacation. And so that formula is black and white. It's very easy. It's just ones and zeros to articulate. And so as you continue to add staff, at some point in that CLA, it triggers another firefighter off on vacation, just using the formula. And so those float personnel that we were talking about earlier, the need for those every few stations is because the formula changes, another firefighter is allowed off on vacation. And so those float staff essentially fill those vacation holes for those vacation leaves. So that's the concept of the float firefighters. Uh, and it is after every third station, we need to add that group of three more firefighters to help fill that extra vacation slot. That's the float firefighter, uh, aspect. And then lastly, just community impact. And you know, I, I said this before, and I'll certainly say it again. It's one thing to look at the national standard, and I think national standards matter because they give us a, a guiding, a guiding point. But I always try and bring it back. How does it benefit us and how does it affect us right here in Boise? If you look right now, uh, our goal is to get eight firefighters on scene. Sorry, not eight firefighters. That would really screw up the budget discussion. My apologies. Four firefighters on scene within eight minutes. Had that a little backwards. Uh, to do that today, we're only hitting that about 51% of the time on all our calls, and the goal is to improve that. Uh, so if you look at, how do we do that? When we add a fourth firefighter to a station, and then last time I used station six as the example, as we ran our analysis using the new formula, station six on Franklin Road, right in front of Bishop Kelly, was identified as the next station that four-person staffing would have the most benefit based on all the formula, uh, and data points. Adding a fourth person to station six would improve performance about 32%. That's a pretty good return on investment, meaning we're gonna now add 32% of the time, we're gonna get those four firefighters on scene within eight minutes. And as you add additional stations, that percentage continues to grow and rise. So uh, that's the, the emergency response. On the operational strain, it does have some effect, certainly on, I, I will start with the end. Resiliency during disaster, and we don't get disasters very often. When I think disasters, I think valley fire, I think the hangar collapse. Some of those calls that are very resource intensive, and those four-person staffed engines really help us meet the performance and get to work a whole lot sooner on some of those larger scale incidents. There's also an issue with higher overtime. Uh, the more vacancies we have and we don't have the staffing to fill it, uh, that overtime strain is real. Uh, as a chief, overtime is part of my world every day. Where I get concerned is when we are mandating people back to work because they're so burned out coming in additionally on off-shift that they just don't want to come in anymore. So they're not volunteering to sign up for that overtime. It's us calling them, telling us you have to come in. And, and once in a while, that's fine, but if it gets too extreme, uh, that really, uh, is a culture hit. Um, it's a morale hit. So we try and balance that really well. And then burnout is, is another operational strain that we can see if we're not staffed properly. And then rising long-term costs. We know that, uh, when we delay things, it's gonna cost more tomorrow than it does today. And that's certainly a balancing act between budget and the decisions you all make. Uh, but we know there is some of that, uh, that plays here. So with that, I'm gonna take a pause. Those are the three slides that I presented before. I'd really like just to more engage and ask, uh, answer your questions, uh, to the ability I can.
Madam Mayor, uh, Chief Niemeyer, could you go back to the costs of four-person? Uh, could you remind me how many stations we have with four-person now and when we would anticipate within your strategic plan, when we would have to hire those float personnel?
Um, yeah. Yeah. Great question. Um, Madam Mayor, Council President Nash, currently the city, uh, has one station that is staffed at four-person, that's station 15. We're gonna be opening up station 13, uh, here soon, which is gonna be great. That'll be the second city station that has four-person staff. And I say city because we have one more station that is staffed with four people, and that's our contract with North Hated County Fire and Rescue. So it's station 16 on Glenwood. They are staffed with four-person, uh, but Nacfor pays for those four firefighters to be at that station. So two city, uh, and one at Nacfor. So that's how many we have today. And then your second question.
Well, maybe tell me in your strategic plan, when you would anticipate bringing further uh, stations on four-person and at what point in those additions do we need to consider adding float personnel? Because
What stations those would be?
I think we already know that. I think it's sixth and 14.
Yes. Uh, so six is the next station we identified. Uh, and then after that, it was 14. I don't have the list in front of me. I apologize. Uh, I believe it was station one, but I'd have to go back and look to be sure. But we had that, that list. And, and what we, what we committed to last time I was here is that when we add a station, say station six, we will rerun the analysis because it might show that 14 might be next today, but with the addition at station six, it might change just a little bit on which station is the next priority. So it'd be an annual update to council on which one is, is next. Uh, the rest of your question, I don't know why.
Madam Mayor, uh, Chief Niemeyer, at what point, if, like, we, if we have two stations in the strategic plan for next year, which was my previous understanding, let me know if that's changed. At what point in bringing on new stations to four-person, either, uh, 13, uh, what point are we gonna have to hire float personnel?
Yeah, great question. Madam Mayor, Councilmember, Council President Nash, for every third station we bring on, we need to add a set of float personnel. And so one of the things that affects us, and I don't want to give a, a great answer here, but I gotta give you some of the facts. We have, uh, a recruit academy going on right now. And if we have no retirements, we'll be fully staffed. So that fluctuates a little bit as far as retirements, uh, and how we navigate that throughout the year. But for purposes of the float personnel, um, for every third station, we need to add a float. Uh, we're adding 15, we're, uh, that has four-person. We just added station 13 that has four-person. Uh, we can probably wait a couple more years, in my opinion, and with, that'll fluctuate again, but we're not, uh, you mentioned in two years, we need for, uh, to add the extra float personnel. We can wait on that because it's not gonna necessarily trigger that formula.
Well, here's what I'm
Really about the formula.
Here's what I'm concerned about, Chief Niemeyer, is we have three stations now that are planning for person. In your strategic plan, you have two more proposed for next fiscal year. But those two more, we will, at that point, we'll have five.
Yep.
It seems like we'll have a need for float personnel at that point. And, uh, heading into the CLA, following that, what I'm concerned about is our strategic plan maybe not matching with what our revenue is at and us have, setting the expectation that we could have two stations at four-person plus the float as a budget pressure next fiscal year.
Now we're on the same page. Sorry, sorry about that. The two for next fiscal year, the 27, was one four-person station and the float firefighters. I apologize for that. We, it took me a little bit to catch up with you.
Okay.
So that wasn't adding two more stations at four-person staffing. That was adding one more station of four-person staffing plus the float personnel.
Okay.
And that's what I believe we can
Probably just more of a comment, Madam Mayor. Um, when we, when we see four-person and we understand like the long-term budget implications of this, it's in the tens of millions of dollars and ongoing. Uh, obviously, we do not have that today. Um, best way to eat an elephant is one bite at a time. And I'm concerned about setting ourselves up next fiscal year for having, um, that much new personnel growth. Um, heading into the next CLA, I, I worry we're not gonna be able to make some of those commitments in the strategic plan if we push it all to next fiscal year. So just something I'm kicking around, um, about, I, I'd rather a slow and steady approach than doing big jumps at a time. Um, but just something that's on my mind.
Madam Mayor. Um, thanks, Chief Niemeyer, for bringing this forward and for continuing to educate us on, on the benefits of four-person staffing. And I know, um, out in West Boise is really targeted for the next couple of stations for the four-person staffing. And as we go into fiscal 26 and, and thinking about what, uh, Council President Nash just said is, you know, I, I look at maybe having two within fiscal 27's budget, is there an opportunity that we could look to staff one station, the next station, station six, to four-person staffing? So I think if we had this with it, i- if it was possible, and we were able to get this in the budget, I, I'm thinking about for fiscal 26, the 781,000 wouldn't be I, I, I mean, considering recruitment and going through academy, we're probably not spending that in a fiscal, in the first fiscal year because of, of them having, of everything that they need to go through for training. Would that be an accurate assumption?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Corliss, um, we typically try and hire in August to start up an academy in the fall. And so there is a little bit of carryover prior to the start of the fiscal year. And then, once we start the fiscal year, we are paying that recruit salary. Uh, you can see that in the one-time costs. Uh, that takes about 12 weeks and then they get out on the line. Uh, and now we're paying them out of our budget. So it's, I, I always look at the recruit academy as one bucket of money that we use. And then, once they get out of the recruit academy, we're starting into the fiscal year budget, uh, paying them as full-time firefighters, even though they're on probation, they're now on, on the, um, ongoing cost salary. So we would use definitely some of that. I don't know that in the first year, you'd use all of that because there is that split between the recruit academy, that 190,000, and then the remaining M and O for the rest of the fiscal year. Uh, but then that second year, you would pick up the full cost.
Uh, Madam Mayor, uh, Chief Niemeyer, do you see where there's a possibility to look at budgeting for, uh, that, that station and fire station six to four-person staffing for fiscal 26?
I think that's a broader decision beyond the fire chief. And I hate to give that answer, but you know, I said this before. When it comes to four-person staffing, from a ability to recruit, ability to train, ability to get them on the line, we're ready. Um, it really is a matter of budget and, and we are sensitive to that. We understand the challenges you all face. Uh, but from a operational standpoint, we're ready.
And Madam Mayor, just one other follow-up question. So, um, station six there, I, I mean, we all know for the routine calls for firefighters, we think about a fire in a house, but there's so much more for car accidents and, and everything else that, that fire station is really strategic. I think it's probably one of the closest to freeway access and also access to the Y right there. And I imagine the number of calls that happen. I think we recently had a car fire pretty close by there. Um, is, are those other kind of calls increasing that need at fire station six?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Corliss, yes. Um, and I, that's where I love our analysis. Now, if you look at the risk factors in that area of station six, the hospital, the mall, uh, the fuel tank farm, the, the freeway, ID4 and 184 and access to that, that's why it landed number one, was based on several of those risk factors, the call volume it currently has. Again, that's where I love the formula we built. It's repeatable and it's pretty, uh, pretty objection-based, uh, not subjective.
Great. Thank you. Uh, and the Madam Mayor, just to, just as a, a note to the council, I think there's, there's nothing more important than we can do to take a look and, and really the priority of safety for our residents and the city. And I think this is something we really should consider to see what we can do to potentially pull in a fire station to four-person staffing for fiscal 26. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, we have the police chief.
Is this your first, first budget workshop?
Yeah, it may have been Doug and Mark's last, but it is my first. Afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. Uh, for the FTEs for BPD, uh, I'll jump in. The three we're looking, uh, the three of the six we're looking for are the juvenile detective positions. Um, currently, we have 15 of our school resource officers that are often tasked with investigations related to, uh, it'd be juvenile and juvenile sexual abuse, juvenile on juvenile offender injury to child, where the offender is also a juvenile. Um, adult misdemeanor, child abuse crimes with little to no injury, welfare checks, runaways, home visits, um, after-hours school threats, a variety of crimes. Can give you kind of idea on the numbers with, that we're dealing with is in 2002, we had a total of 429 cases of these types that were reported that were handled typically by our SROs. Um, that number rose in 2023 to over 1,050 cases. About half were then designated the SROs. The rest were routed to special victims or other investigative details within BPD. Um, last year, our numbers rose to 2,862 of these types of investigations with over 1,469 of them being routed to the school resource officers. Our concerns are these cases are pulling our SROs out of the schools more frequently. It's limiting our ability for engagement and outreach in the schools. And these officers don't have the level of investigative experience and training that our detectives have. So asking for the three juvenile detective positions will allow us enhanced training, keep our SROs in the school for a greater length of time. Um, and limiting the amount of calls that SROs are having to respond to. So anything that requires typically the officers to leave the schools for follow-up or more in-depth investigation to be routed to the detective detail as opposed to the SROs.
Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so in addition to the SROs that we have right now, do we have any juvenile detectives or are these actually brand-new positions to?
To the These will be, these will become brand-new positions. We've started moving people over, um, to start filling that need within BPD, but these positions would help backfill where we pulled from patrol to do that.
Okay. Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Chief Dinnison, if you could help me just kind of square some maybe priors I have about this. Um, I recognize the serious nature of the crimes that these individuals would be investigating, and I'm supportive of, especially as we need more resources among special victims, detectives. Um, at the same time, I am nervous about putting more resources that would probably pull more juveniles into the criminal justice system. Can you help me kind of maybe square some of my anxiety about that and also maybe speak to some of the challenges that SROs might have with being like that friendly face in the school, but also investigating dad for, um, arresting my dad for hitting someone in my family?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember, yes, the goal here is actually to keep the SROs that friendly face, so they are not taking that type of enforcement action in school. We are looking for more of that engagement with them. Where the concerns are, uh, routing more juveniles into the criminal justice system, most of the cases that we're talking about that would go to the juvenile investigators are ones that we would investigate regardless. And these are the sexual abuse cases, the injury to child, a lot of the property crimes associated with, with minors. We still have options to potentially work with them. Um, but the idea is here, the idea here is to remove the SROs from that criminal investigative component as much as possible to work on that engagement. Um, an outreach component to try to push people, uh, minors away from the criminal justice system and a more positive engagement in the community.
Could you speak to property crimes? Uh, that wasn't something that had been on my radar, what juvenile property crimes look like. And do you have any idea what type of case load that would constitute for some of these detectives? I would say that's probably a lower priority for me relative to some of the other more serious crimes you mentioned.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, Councilmember, so the property crimes that we're talking about, these could be burglaries, auto thefts, car busts, possession of firearms, those types of crimes, um, where we have victims uh, engaged in it. Um, I don't have the specific numbers, the breakdown on those numbers. Um, but I can come back with those if you're, if we're looking at juvenile-related property crime. Sometimes that's a little harder to parse out within our data, but we know it is an issue that we continually investigate.
Yeah, I'd be interested. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I could just follow up on a couple of things. So I'm trying to understand why, um, why we would move towards these positions rather than adding additional SVU folks or adding additional just patrol officers who might be addressing some of those things. So I'm assuming that there's some specialty here and some work with juveniles that's probably different training than a typical officer may have. But can you explain a little bit why we would just invest into some other similar positions who might be picking it up now?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, yes, one of the asks I will have later is for an expansion within SVU, uh, related to certain investigations. However, these are unique investigations where we're dealing with minors involved in crimes. Um, there are certain forensic interviews that have to be done when we're talking about victims of crime, and we want special, we want these folks to have specialty training. We're talking about threats to schools specifically after hours runaway investigation. Some of the other things that would be more nuanced, specific to juvenile offender issues as opposed to just an adult, uh, adult offender that's typically routed to SVU. That doesn't mean that SVU will not see obviously child sexual abuse, child sexual assault cases where the perpetrator is an adult. Those cases would still be routed to SVU for appropriate investigative follow-up. Um, but in these cases, these folks will be trained specifically to look at trends and issues within the ju- with juveniles, uh, related to our schools and minors in the city.
Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Chief, um, I recall in recent CLA negotiations that are ongoing, uh, talk about our SRO program and, um, an experienced, I, I think retired officer had, had talked about the, uh, growing demands of, of writing reports outside of kind of normal school hours. Do you see this direction as providing a net reduction in that kind of demand on SRO time?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, yes, absolutely. In fact, the goal here is to make, to have the SROs where they're not typically in an on, an on-call status that would be reserved for the investigative personnel, both the juvenile detectives and the special victims unit. Um, they'll all be housed together, so working together, and only rarely would the SROs be called out because they may have some specific knowledge about an offender or a victim that we would need the SRO to leverage the SROs. But yes, that would be a decrease in the SRO workload.
Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Chief Dinnison, from time to time, just, I, I'm not a criminal defense attorney, but you get questions a lot. Uh, a common question I get is, uh, police question my child at school, uh, without my consent. Uh, I, I think about that as it relates to these positions. Uh, do you know if the department has a po- a policy related to questioning of uh, children, either as witnesses or otherwise, uh, without parental consent in, in the schools?
Madam Mayor, uh, Councilmember Nash, I, I can speak to it. I, I might mislabel the language that's used in Idaho, but there are times that we, um, we work with Child Protective Services, take custody of a child specifically for victim crimes to facilitate those, um, those investigations. And again, this is an area where we can utilize the juvenile detectives to be well-versed in all aspects of that to ensure that we're, um, providing all the protections necessary, both for victims and offender, minor offenders.
Thank you.
All right, um. So, uh, the, of the three next positions that BPD is looking to add will be one domestic violence detective, one financial tech detective, and one special victims unit detective. Uh, to give you, to give you some context and numbers, and 2024, there were a total of 611 domestic violence cases reported with 718 separate charges. BPD currently only has one domestic violence detective who primarily investigates felony cases. Uh, in 2024, there were 222 felony-related cases. The detective was assigned 125, which resulted in 84 being cleared by an arrest citation warrant or exceptional clearance. Um, the goal here is adding the additional DB detective to expand our investigative capacity. The vast majority of misdemeanor cases are not investigated by BPD through investigative means. So if, that means if patrol goes out, they conduct an investigation and arrest is not made at that time, the investigation is closed. It doesn't typically get they conduct an investigation and arrest is not made at that time, the investigation is closed. It doesn't typically get routed for follow-up. This will allow us to expand, um, our reach into certain misdemeanor crimes, hopefully to avoid future felony crimes. Um, and reduce the overall caseload for the one DB detective, sure that, to ensure that we have greater, uh, greater depth in our investigations, that they're more thorough and well-done. Um, and then we'll look at the financial crimes tech to B P D has four detectives assigned to that unit over the past three years. We see in an average about one thousand two hundred and ten cases assigned a year, meaning each detective is roughly look, has about a hundred and ninety-two cases annually. Uh, these cases, as you can imagine, are complex, especially in the internet age. Uh, to give you an idea, in twenty twenty-two, in the state of Idaho, uh, it was estimated that, um, Idahoans lost about two, uh, twenty-nine point two million dollars related to fraud. In twenty twenty-four, that number rose to fifty-two point nine million. Um, Boise has seen a significant increase in this area of fraud, specifically around cryptocurrency. These cases are in, are, uh, long-term. There, it takes a lot of time to work them. They're very in-depth, a lot of subpoenas, search warrants and forensic, uh, forensic review of, of accounts, cell phones and computers. Uh, our current average caseload per detective fluctuates between ten active cases to fifteen active cases. The goal here is to add an additional financial crimes detective to reduce that overall caseload. So we can be more effective in handling these crimes that are affecting just the average Boisean citizen, um, and ensure greater investigative capability. And then the last position, the special victims detective. Currently, we have nine detectives, uh, allotted for SVU. These case detectives obviously investigate crimes ranging from child physical abuse, child sexual abuse, um, to, uh, adult sexual assault. Additionally, some of those cases that were the SRS were handling were, will be routed, um, to SVU. Typically, that'll be your more serious, um, your child abuse with felony injuries, and then obviously any child sex assaults, um, or sex abuse where the offender is a, is an adult. In twenty twenty-four, we had a total of seven hundred and thirty cases assigned with an average of eighty-one cases assigned per detective. Uh, the numbers broke out to about five hundred, five hundred and twenty-seven child cases and two hundred and three adult cases. Uh, hundred and ninety-two of those cases were cleared by a recitation warrant or exceptional clearance. Um, as of now, SVU is currently holding ninety open active investigations. The goal with adding this additional detective is twofold. One, we want to reduce the caseload that it currently exists within SVU to, um, allow greater investigative capacity, uh, for more thorough investigations and increase our closure rate. And lastly, and probably one of the most important things is we want to increase our ability to do proactive work targeting, uh, predators in the community, specifically going after children. Whether it's seeking children for sexual activity and/or human trafficking with adults. So those are the six positions that B P D is looking to add.
Madam Mayor. Um, Chief Denison, I was surprised. I didn't see any requests related to civilian positions in some of these maybe more forensic. Um, uh, some of the more forensic work that both SVU and then finance and tech crimes investigate. In future budget cycles, could we anticipate, uh, requests related to maybe those divisions and civilian physicians as the more kind of the crimes get more sophisticated and how they're using technology and how maybe our needs related to this might be more suited for someone with some civilian I T experience?
Madam Mayor, council member, uh, absolutely. So B P D is currently go, um, working on a strategic plan, looking at least a minimum of ten years out. We're looking at as we, as we're looking to add staffing, both sworn and professional staff, what those folks are going to be doing. Our current needs are to reduce overall caseload where we do need sworn members to conduct those criminal investigations. But I completely agree with you. There's a lot of capacity for professionalization to help out and augment, um, tech investigations when it looks at phone, uh, cell phone extractions, other types of, uh, technical stuff that we can pay a professional staff member due to augment the investigative capacity.
Madam Mayor, uh, one thing I'm not disappointed by it, but impressed that, uh, no requests related to traffic enforcement. Uh, however, it sounds like what we heard in State of the City, that maybe some tra- there's some good traffic enforcement numbers. Could you speak to how you maybe been able to achieve that with existing personnel?
Madam Mayor, council member Nash, uh, absolutely. So we've doubled our, we've, uh, really focused on our efforts with our patrol teams, um, upping our, our traffic enforcement. I have given direction to see increase, uh, traffic enforcement from patrol as well as our motor teams. Um, we've seen about a twenty-three percent increase this year. Now, I haven't mandated traffic sites. I, I look at the traffic enforcement, could be a variety of education warnings, um, and citations the officers deem necessary. So I don't want to restrict, um, officer discretion in that case. But, uh, traffic enforcement is a priority for me and the Boise Police Department, and we've been able to accomplish that through existing staffing with patrol. And with the recent promotion of Captain Ransom, who now oversees the patrol division, I have reinforced this with him that patrol will continue to, um, conduct traffic stops to hopefully reduce our, uh, fatal injury and injury-related collision, related collisions.
Madam Mayor, uh, Chief Denison, it was my impression at the end of last calendar year that, uh, we were near full staffing. Now, my email has been slammed with retirement announcements since then, so I imagine that we're not there right now. Could you just give us an idea of where we've been recently and kind of where we're at with staffing with existing, uh, positions you have available?
Madam Mayor, uh, council member Dash, uh, yes, as we were coming into the end of calendar year twenty-five or twenty-four into twenty, into calendar year twenty-five, we were nearing full staffing with minimal vacancies, both, um, sworn and professional staff. Professional staff, uh, staffing numbers still look really good. Um, we have seen a decrease in our sworn staffing. We're currently holding about sixteen vacancies. However, with anticipated hiring with our laterals from across the country as well as our basic training, we should, we should be bumping back up into full staffing. Um, in July, we'll have those, we're anticipating having those folks in training and deployable with, uh, within three to four months later, depending on, um, whether it's basic and or lateral trainings.
Okay. And just finally a comment, Madam Mayor and Council. Um, I, I got an email, um, from, um, uh, Deputy Chief, uh, regarding your strategic planning effort. Looking forward to what results that yields. I would just add some of my thoughts about it. I would be really, um, curious about what kind of those needs and goals are around special victims unit and some of, um, the, the financial and fraud crimes that you're seeing and how we can staff civilian positions, but also make sure we have that detective support. Uh, meeting with SVU earlier this year to kind of understand some crimes that have been happening in, um, my neighborhood. Uh, I was really shocked at the level of, um, uh, of work that they could be doing with the amount of complaints that I received. I'm also very aware from my work at the state that the state, uh, relies on B P D pretty excessively, uh, for, uh, the investigation of these types of crimes. Um, but I, I still want to double down and make sure that we're protecting kids the best we can. Um, but also looking for ways to partner with the state that if that investigative burden is on the city of Boise, that we're looking for ways to, um, both do more and better work, but also, uh, be, uh, adequately share in, in how that is funded. So that would, that would, those would be some of my, uh, priorities as you head into strategic planning.
Madam Mem- uh, Madam Mayor, council member Nash, uh, absolutely. Show those priorities. Like tell everybody when it comes to criminal justice, the water's warm, jump on in. So if I can get partnerships with anybody, both state, other local partners, community members, we're going to do that. Um, and our strategic plan will again, look at not only just the number of officers we're looking to get, uh, for sworn staffing within B P D, but specifically what we want those folks to be doing, looking at those investigations, whether it's fraud, um, special victims, patrol across the camp, uh, across the board.
Yep, Madam Mayor. Um, I think since I've been on council, we've approved additional positions for our two public safety departments every single year. This might be the first year that fire hasn't asked for or gotten another one. I'm not sure. But this is the first time that I think I've ever seen the police department requesting really four different detective-related positions. So it's a little bit different and I don't know if that's because of a change in the crime that we're seeing. I don't know if it's a changing policing philosophy as a new police chief. I don't know if it's an area maybe that we've just sort of neglected or it just happens to be this way because of some retirements. So can you talk a little bit about why we're seeing, um, requests for, for different detective-related positions and not more patrol or um, behavioral health response teams or things along those lines?
Madam Mayor, council member, absolutely. So when we were doing our budget build, it wasn't just, I didn't want to just ask for sworn positions. I wanted to look at specifically what were the needs within B P D that were our priorities. Um, and these were the ones that rose to the top of the list for us. These are some of our most vulnerable populations, uh, looking at caseload for these detectives and looking, how can we not only lower the caseload for the detectives to ensure that our investigations are more thorough um, and get the attention that they deserve, uh, but also look at areas where we could potentially start doing proactive work to reduce the number of reported crimes down the road. So that was some of the discussions that we had. Um, we had some discussions related to traffic uh, and traffic, but we are seeing numbers rise with B P D. So we're going to continue with, with that plan for now. Um, and then, uh, looking at our B H R T teams, that was a discussion point. We are currently hiring for a third clinician and we will self-solve with a third, um, officer into behavioral teams. Uh, I also had our entire, um, crisis intervention training program reviewed by international coordinator came back that, uh, B P D is meeting and or exceeding the training standards in that area. So I'm really proud of the work that B P D has done and that our patrol officers continue to do every day with this level of training. And additionally, um, for some of those more critical incidents where we have our special operations, you know, going out, we do have our crisis negotiation teams um, that go out with them that have a vast amount of training in this area to help reduce, hopefully to reduce those incidents where deadly force does not need to be applied.
Great. And then just kind of following up there. So it sounds like we do have three behavioral health response teams in approved F T Es, but we're still maybe filling the third team. Did I get that right?
Madam Mayor, council member, uh, yes, we did a hiring, uh, we got two applicants. Um, the, uh, one unfortunately did not pass backgrounds, the other one declined the offer. So that one's currently out and open, uh, it will be opened up again. Um, and we will be able to bring in a sworn position to, to make that third team complete.
Yeah, wonderful. Thank you. And I do want to thank you for being specific on these positions. I think my first year, maybe my first couple of years on council, sometimes we would get requests for F T Es or requests for funding, but it wasn't necessarily, we didn't know exactly which one of those positions were going to be because there wasn't necessarily that detailed of a plan. We just knew that we needed more sworn officers in general. So actually having the specific, um, positions you're looking for, why the gaps that they're going to solve, um, it is helpful. Uh, cause I think it, one, it helps us better understand those positions and better understands what the need is for that specific funding. Um, in this case, in the first position, you know, working with some of our youth and taking some of the pressure off those SROs to do some of that more community policing. So it tells the story of your budget and how that will have an impact. So I appreciate the specificity that you brought to, um, these position requests.
Madam Mayor, Chief, thank you so much for your presentation and a couple of questions. First, I think it was about two years ago, we had a crime presentation that went through all of the different segments of crime. And as I recall, overall, oh yeah. Overall, crime was down, but the internet crimes and the crimes against children were up. Can you verify if my memory is correct on that?
Uh, Madam Mayor, council member Willis, I don't have the exact numbers from the presentation you had, uh, two years ago, but yes, that is, that is a trend. So we're seeing violent crime numbers continue to trend down. Um, however, we are seeing increase in internet-related crimes, um, fraud-related crimes that are growing, uh, and we're trying to staff appropriately to address those.
And just to jump in, you are correct in your memory of that presentation. And then Chief, I, I want to talk a little bit about the crypto, um, detective for the finance. I had the opportunity to talk to the gentleman who is an expert in this area. And he said that the United States has very, very, um, loose laws when it comes to, to what, what can happen to people from a consumer perspective. People can lose everything, uh, in this. Have you had any conversations with any of your colleagues, not only in, in the state, but nationwide about how to police in this area, knowing that there's very little, in my opinion, there's very little guardrails.
Madam Mayor, council member, uh, yeah, policing this area is exceptionally difficult. Um, the guard, it's not only just the loose guardrails, but it's also the complexity of these investigations and then taking them in front of a jury and trying to explain to a jury some of the nuance that exists here. So that, that's one of the reasons these, these crimes tend to be very difficult, uh, to work. Um, Boise is probably one of the few departments that I'm aware of in the nation that actually invests and does this type of work to protect our citizens. And I think it's something we should continue to double down on. Because to your point, it can have significant financial ramifications to, um, people within our community.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Chief. I, I would be interested just for us as a, as a leader in the state to be able to talk more about this because the, the situations that I was hearing about were people that, that lost their entire retirement. They had nothing. And so, you know, if somebody gets a hold of your credit card, you have a recourse. But in this area, it's still the Wild West. And so I think we have an opportunity to really educate not only the public, but also some of our state partners and our local partners about just how devastating this can be to a consumer. And then one last question, um, you know, you talked about having the information to bring this first to a jury and actually do convictions. We've added a number of attorneys over time in the last few years. And I'm very pleased to see that we're going to have more detectives. I think that's a really smart move. Will that have a ripple effect when it comes to beefing up our legal services within the city?
Madam Mayor, uh, council member Willis, I think with the addition of these detectives, we're investigating these crimes now. We're just doing it with reduced staffing, which has an in, has an overall impact, I think, in the, the, the depth we can go into them. Uh, so I don't anticipate having a significant impact in our legal services for prosecution. It's just going to make sure that our investigations are thorough, well-documented and potentially we can start getting to that proactive work.
Madam Mayor. Uh, just a follow-up question on some of council member Hallie Burton's questions about behavioral health teams. Um, uh, just over a year ago, we had a critical incident that was at nighttime and I, we've had several more that have been at nighttime and we think about, I think more and more about the availability of the behavioral health teams. Do you have any idea? And if you don't, I'd be interested in it. What would it take to get a hundred percent full staffing twenty-four, seven for those behavioral health teams? Because I think we have three teams funded, two teams staffed. But even if we have four teams funded and three teams staffed, uh, do we, do we even get there? Or is it something that's going to take a little bit more than that? And is, is that even a goal of the department?
Uh, Madam Mayor, council member Nash, uh, I would say currently if we were going to look at twenty-four, seven staffing for that, we would need a significant increase in these resources, um, upwards of probably six to eight teams. Um, and right now, looking at how the behavioral health team works, which is more of a proactive nature. Um, they do respond to some calls that are, um, in progress, but a lot of it's proactive, trying to move people away from the criminal justice system before there is a crisis or they, they're having a, an issue in which, uh, patrol is responding. Uh, right now, we're looking at our training methodology for our police officers, our, our patrol officers to be able to respond out. That's where the crisis intervention training, having that looked at was so important and augmenting that training with, uh, our block training that we're currently doing, working on communication, de-escalation, that time distance shielding that some of the technology asked, um, with the, uh, the Axon buildup for this year will help us, help us ensure. So eventually it'd be nice to get to that point, but right now I'm looking at where do, where do, where are my biggest needs? And I think what we're looking at from our patrol officers with our crisis intervention training, adding the third team to be doing that proactive work with B H R T. Um, and the additional work with our C N T teams for those, uh, acute critical incidents. I think B P D is in a really good shape.
Madam Mayor. Yeah. Thanks, Chief Denison, for the presentation and, and, uh, for walking us through why we're asking for the positions we're asking for. I want to circle back to the domestic violence detective. So as, if I understand this correctly, we have one on staff and they have a caseload over a hundred and twenty cases. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, uh, council member, that's correct. So the hundred and twenty-five cases would have been during the entire calendar year of, um, of twenty twenty-four. So you can, you can anticipate an average of anywhere from eight to maybe fifteen cases they're holding at one given time. And the idea of adding that second detective is to drop those cases down from double digits. The word constantly staying in the single digits. Um, think of it, case comes in, the detective works at they close the case either through an arrest or the case can't proceed any further. So the case is closed. The idea is that we have two detectives that are doing that. So we expand our investigative capacity to start looking at misdemeanor, some misdemeanor crimes as well.
That's great. Um, yeah, cause I, I was thinking if they go on vacation or they're out, their cases are just back going into a backlog and seem like quite a bit of cases, um, considering the nature of these cases, they probably want to get on them sooner than later. Um, so with the, with staffing up to two is for the size of our city and police force is, um, would you consider that as the gold standard or are we right where we need to be or are we just at the bottom threshold?
Madam Mayor, council member, I would say with the number of cases that we're currently seeing, if that trends, if that trend continues to hold, I think we're in good shape with two investigators. I, I, I think we're going to be meeting the need of, uh, the city of Boise.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I guess maybe one more follow-up here. And you sort of answered this a little bit earlier with council president Nash's question, but I remember when you were um, first interviewing for the job, you talked a little bit about some of the success I think that you'd had with civilian. Um, first interviewing for the job, you talked a little bit about some of the success I think that you'd had with civilian, uh, detective positions. Um, especially I think getting more, um, women involved with the police force. And, you know, maybe that's part of the strategic plan. Maybe that's something that, you know, how somehow integrates with these officers. But I'm wondering if you can talk to us a little bit more. About any opportunities for, um, civilian type positions, you know, within some of these roles.
Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember, absolutely. So, uh, professional staff, uh. Back when it's Tucson, I used them to expand our investigative capacity as, uh. You mentioned with the professional staff detective program. Um, and that was bringing folks in and training them to be detectives. The only difference was they didn't have the ability to affect an arrest. So they could only take the investigation so far. Um, that was a significant success within Tucson to deal with man, um, shortage and staffing where we had decreased detectives. Um, for such a large city. That is something we will continue to look at where we can expand our community service officers to pick up work for patrol. So we can dedicate our sworn personnel. To do that, some of that proactive work in traffic enforcement, some of the criminal community complaints that we deal with. Um, and again, looking at where we can augment professional staff in our tech investigations. When we're looking at forensic downloads of phones and extracting that data and putting it into a usable document for detectives to increase the investigation. So yes. That will be part of the strategic plan is where can we start, where can we start leveraging professional staff to augment our sworn personnel, uh, to be more effective?
Yeah, great. Um, and I guess my last question, maybe you have this number in front of you right now. Do you know what the current budget increase that you're asking for? For the police department is, or do you just know the positions?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember, I don't have the exact number off the top of my head.
Okay, um, that'd be good to know. I'm sure that we'll get that as we get further along into the budget book in the second meeting. Um, I do, uh. Again, I appreciate, um, the specific requests that you're coming with. I also know that every single department here, you know, is pinched, you know, probably need some additional staff as well. And I guess I would just ask you to continue to explore, and it sounds like you are, how you might be able to use some of these civilian positions and these different types of programs. To supplement or to assist with some of the things that you're doing. Knowing that, you know, this may be the request this year, but next year might be just as tighter, it might actually be tighter. Um, and there may be some new and challenging needs. So I would, I would ask you to continue to look in those. Um, work with those behavioral health response teams. And I do agree that they certainly are proactive. Um, and I, um, appreciate that you're offering some of that training for additional folks because there is such a rising mental health crisis. In so many of our crimes, but my hope is that sometimes that they're. That they are the ones who are reactive. They are the ones who are coming to a scene first when we know. It's a sensitive situation. If somebody is potentially, you know, suicidal or something along these lines that we do. Um, not only have the training of our police officers, uh, to deal with these, but somebody who really specializes in that area specifically. And so I do think that there's an opportunity there too. And I think that's something that we had originally hoped to see with those behavioral health response teams. So maybe that's a continued conversation as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Chief. And now we will, um, wrap up. Courtney's going to come back up, I imagine, to double check the list of follow-up items as well as some other, uh, wrap-up issues.
Uh, Madam Mayor, with your permission, before I get into the list, if, if we could have Jamie Heiserling come up and address Councilmember Willetts' question while she's here.
Yeah.
That would be helpful.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for asking the staffing question today. I'll start by just addressing by the numbers. Um, in the past decade, the city of Boise has seen an increase of city employees by five hundred. Uh, also the citizen population over the last 10 years within the city of Boise and surrounding area has also increased significantly as we all know. Um, one of the things in the past decade is that the city clerk's office, while we provide services to both internal customers. And our external citizens, we have not seen a staffing increase at all in the last 10 years. So, and that's the reason that we are asking for additional staffing. As you saw, uh, in the past. Couple of weeks during some of my presentations, we do have statutory requirements. There are risks with the work that we do, and we certainly want to make sure that we're minimizing those risks. I think just another quick point is while the FTE count in the city clerk's office has seen a net zero gain in the last 10 years. The one position, uh, that we did have, that we added was a front office clerk, but we also lost a senior manager at that same time. So we have seen just a shift in staffing, certainly to help our external customers, but we are as a new department. Within the organization, seeing some of those staffing constraints without having those increases in the past 10 years and happy to stand for any other questions.
Councilmember, do you have anything more?
Maybe.
Okay.
Thank you, Jamie. I just want to double check some information that I had, but that is very helpful. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, did you have something?
Oh, if we were waiting for Lucy, then I was going to ask something. If not, sure. Um, so you, you'd given a presentation the other day about some of the increased requests that you were getting, some public records requests and other types of things as well. Um, I think actually the last couple of years, council's been asking a little bit about, do we need more, uh, folks in the clerk's office? We keep creating these new. Um, initiatives, resolutions, ordinances, and then the clerk's office sort of has to execute on those. So I, I was wondering if you could just, uh, maybe talk briefly about the public records requests and how that's increasing in the amount of. Additional staff time that that's taking and will these positions be some of the folks that are working with that?
Absolutely. Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Halliburton, uh, the positions that are being requested are in the records realm. Um, so a reclass for the supervisor position that is currently there. Uh, that person provides clerking services for mayor, council, other boards and commissions. Um, as well as another FTE to help fill the PRR requests. Currently we have a position that is backfilled. Which has really allowed us to keep up with records destructions. If someone's out of the office, they can fill in for PRRs or help. Just address and answer some of those additional PRRs that are coming into our office. And if you'd like more statistics, we do track how many PRRs come in every week, uh, every month and over the last couple of years. I'm, I don't have that at my fingertips today, but I'm happy to provide that to mayor and council.
Madam Mayor. Jamie, thank you. And this might, might be a little murky because of the reorg. So there's 11 FTEs in the city clerk's office. Is that correct?
Uh, there are 12, counting myself.
Okay. And then where was the city clerks? Where did the city clerks sit before the, the reorg?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, we were in the Department of Finance and Administration.
Okay, okay. So, and according to this. And I think you've just verified it there, at least for the last six years, there haven't been any increases in the city clerk's office at all.
Madam Mayor, uh, Councilmember Willetts, yes, no, in the last 10 years at least, maybe even prior to that. Thank you. Thank you.
And Mayor Courtney, before you get started.
Is this for Courtney or somebody else?
Um, and this was a question that I probably get asked a little bit earlier on, but, um, was waiting to see if it'd get covered. So we have a variety of new FTEs that we're asking for this year. Um, but we also have FTEs who are already in the general fund, um, already approved by council. And are we. Planning on maintaining all of the existing positions that we have? Do all those remain? Um, or are there positions that are no longer? Um, that we're holding on to that are vacant?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Halliburton, the city swept the vacant positions that have been vacant for quite a period of time and returned that money to the general fund.
So positions that have been vacant for a long period of time have been swept. And so at this point, people would be requesting something new. But a different department, somebody steps away, retires, um, that's still in the general fund. We're not. Holding those funds, you know, or anything there. We're continuing and that's all baked into the budget as is.
Correct. Um, I do, um, Councilmember, we have contemplated, we did this when we had some challenges in COVID. Um, more oversight into the approval of the refilling of those positions, which we'll do just to make sure. Where we know what we're doing when we're replacing those positions, but it's our intent to keep them.
Great. Um, and.
Also, I'll jump in on here. I, we did a sweep a while ago, but I asked staff again within the last month. To take another look to determine whether or not we could sweep anything to reduce this FTE count. Um, and there wasn't anything to sweep.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think, you know, the, sort of the ones that come off the top of my mind are some of the positions that we have in PDS. And what I just want to make sure is that those positions are still there and still available and that we're not. Um, you know, people aren't running an even lower thing since they're already in the general fund. They're already in the base.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, the positions I think you're referring to currently exist in PDS. The exception to that, if, if PDS was to make a different staffing choice with. FTEs they have that are approved, they have the ability to do that.
To move them around.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, this is one, um. I, I feel like it's like a pop quiz. Um, you're grading, I'm, um, doing the quiz. I have, um, extensive notes about the information you want. Um, I'll go through the list. If I miss some nuance, um, just let me know. Um, and then I will work with the mayor and council leadership to determine. Um, the best way to bring these back to you. Some of these make great presentations, some of these. Not so interesting. We might go to memos or, um, something else. So just let me know. Um, Councilmember Nash, I believe in the beginning of the morning, you asked for. Not just the percentages on those first couple of slides, but the dollar amount those percentages represented. Um, so we can do that. Um, and trends in public safety, healthcare costs, um, the trust balances, the employee contributions. Um, and then Councilmember Corliss, we talked about bringing an ERP presentation back as it relates to the positions. And to the investments the city needs to make in that space. Um, I have a note that we need to come back on an analysis regarding URDs. Um, and the cost and household impacts on both new construction and URD caps. Um, I have an ask for a chart of trends and fund expenditures in the general fund. I'm going to guess 10 years would, would be sufficient. Does that sound good? Um, risk and workers comp, uh, risk reduction. We will be before you, before your next budget workshop to talk about. The steps each department has taken to reduce, um, risk and safety that don't involve, um, additional FTEs. Um, I have a note regarding the capital fund to revisit the costs of each of the major projects and funding strategy for unmet needs. Um, aid street follow-up regarding patios and potential revenue collection for the use of public spaces. Um, land acquisition for parks and open space. I have a note that you might want, um, to explore funding opportunities. A memo regarding scholarships of park and rec programs. For persons, for person staffing. Um, my note is to explore funding opportunities and potential trade-offs for Station Six. And BPD was to bring back detective caseloads and priorities. And then the percentage increase of the asks in the BPD budget. Um, I just, um, Madam Mayor. Want to point out that the only thing that affords us the expansion in the police department is potential cost savings in the contract labor. Agreement. Um, if, if that doesn't work, these positions can't happen. So I want to be super clear. That that's money that was already budgeted for the police department. We're just proposing to expand the staff as opposed to expand. Um, some of the benefits.
Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Courtney, could you give us a status on the CLA negotiations? I know it's been ongoing and there's been some. Difficulty with federal partners on that. Could you speak to that? And if we might have an idea of a resolution prior to budget setting, because. These, adding these positions, I think would be very important to the city.
Uh, Madam Ma, Mayor, Council President, I'm looking at, I think, um, next week will mark the year anniversary. Of my contract labor negotiations with the police union. Um, several months ago. Um, the union requested mediation and we agreed. Unfortunately, it was canceled because everyone who worked in that federal office who can provide the mediation was terminated. And then some were rehired and then they were terminated again. So I requested another, um, negotiation session. I think it's June. Probably 17th, um, in hopes of, um, completing this, um, negotiation.
So is it fair to say that we may or may not have a resolution to the CLA? Prior to budget setting and those positions might be in flux?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Council President, it is my intention, um, to complete this negotiation before you vote on a budget. Um, but the devil's in the details in regards to how the city handles the completion of this.
Are you done with your presentation or did you have more? Cause I had some more questions.
Um, I just wanted, Madam Mayor, just wanted to check and see, did I get everybody's list?
I got a few more things to add.
Okay. Uh, Madam Mayor, I just had one item on my list. I, you may have said it already. Um, is, we were talking about risk and the increase in the funding there. And I think we talked about an update. On why we're seeing that continued increase in. I can do that.
Um. Couple of things here. Uh, one, uh, especially as it relates to our 10-year projection. Um, and how we're kind of changing some of those. Projections to have a structurally balanced budget over time. Um, I recognize needs around being a little bit more conservative on, on pay. What I'm really concerned about is the four and a half percent to three percent. In health insurance funding. Um, I know what my. Goals would be as an employee, but I would really like to better understand how HR and the city, um, thinks about pay versus benefits. I could probably stomach as an employee a little less in a pay increase if I knew my healthcare costs were not going up. Um, so I would like to better understand some thinking around that, both from mayor's office and HR. Um, maybe in a future, wouldn't need to address that today, but I'd, I'd like to understand them.
Yeah, I, I think that's a, a great ask. And what I'd ask beyond just the cost piece is. I think we ought to explain how the whole thing is done. So it's a bucket of money. Um, because I too worry about the impacts of health insurance. So there are ways that employees can continue to have. Very low-cost health insurance. And then those of us that choose to have. A Cadillac version, if you will, then like might pay something different, but there's a bucket of money and that's best explained. Um, I think if we have the team come in and, and talk through, um, how they make those decisions and use the funds that are, that are given to them for these decisions.
Okay. Um, the other thing I'd just note is, uh, we gave some directions to staff, uh, a couple of months ago. Um, when we finalized the Muriel conditions related to how we could let. Impact fees in that part of town. It would be my goal to try to get this. Get, get that kind of figured out heading into next fiscal year so that we're a little bit more clear about. Uh, how, um, impact fees are collected during that fiscal year and how that affects our capital. Planning. So I would just. Request, I haven't seen any movement on that. So if we were able to get some movement on that prior to the end of this fiscal year, I'd be supportive of that. And finally, I just had a comment more directed at council and department heads. I just want to thank everybody for their patience this time. On this budget setting, uh, process. I know we still have more to do. Uh, I know traditionally we've heard from all the department heads. Um, in these presentations, I think some, uh, directors had expressed to me that. They don't really know what to present on, given that we're not going to have a lot of, um, budget growth in each department. Um, council has given me feedback that they would like to see more, uh, director presentations. And I think my expectation would be in the future. That if directors are presenting with just a maintenance budget, that they demonstrate to us what they hope to accomplish with that maintenance budget. Uh, understanding that they may not be speaking to, uh, new, new items, uh, in their budget. So. I just want to thank council for their patience as we try to. Identify some priority areas that we did see budget growth in. Um, but, uh, also kind of give some direction going forward on what our expectation would be if budgets remain tight. Uh, but we still would like to understand what the city hopes to accomplish with the money we do have.
Madam Mayor, Courtney, thank you so much. Um, a couple of things that I think would be really helpful for us as a council.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. What'd you say?
I said a couple of things that would be helpful for us as a council, Courtney. Particularly with the forestry positions, you know, I think that's something that's like out of sight, out of mind, but given, you know, what we see in the West and our fire. Season, I, I would like to know how many people we have right now, what they currently do. I think that's really an important piece for us to invest in. Given what we've seen with some of our neighbors in other states. And then, given the, the capital, um, fund. You know, draining and, you know, using what we can for it, I think would be really helpful for us as a council to get. A historic view of what's been in the capital fund for the last 10 years. I mean, I know some was. Put in, some dollars were put in there for, for the downtown library. That didn't happen. But I think if you could even just group it by bucket, that would be helpful. So, you know, this is how much we spent on parks. This is how much we spent on. Library, like libraries. This is how much we've spent on housing. That would just help us give a sense of. What we've spent in the last 10 years and what we need to think about going forward.
Madam Mayor, we can do that. Um, Councilmember, if I could just ask a clarifying question. Capital involves, um, so many pieces. I just, are we just talking about facilities? Or like, for example, if we were to tell you the cop, the, what we spent on libraries, she wouldn't know if it was a sorter or a bookshelf or a facility. So do you want all the capital costs in the buckets or just the facilities?
I think for a first round, it'd be just interesting for. I think for a first round, it'd be just interesting for facilities.
Okay.
You know, like what, what does it cost to get something built? And then we obviously know that there's a lot of other costs, staff and, and amenities that have to go into that. But I think for a baseline, facilities is fine.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, kind of going back, I think, to Council President Nash's request related to pay and benefits. I think it's a little, looking at the side, it's a little confusing, I think, just for me to see a percentage here and then seeing a dollar amount here and not necessarily knowing exactly what that spells out for staff. And I understand it's hard to say that there's going to be a 1.5% chance for increase in the merit pool versus just saying that this is what the merit pool is and then it's going to be distributed one way or the other. I do think it's helpful for council. I do think it's helpful for staff to know what some of those percentages are. So trying to align that we have 2.6%, you know, available in base increases and another 1% or whatever it is, you know, in another area, just to kind of align those a little bit more. And I realize it's not quite that simple, so there's probably some ways to go in there and do it. But it needs to make sense for us to like really understand, okay, what is it that we're actually approving here? When we're looking at that whole package. So I think what, as it comes back to us from HR and we're looking at healthcare, we're looking at benefits, we're looking at all these other things, just trying to make sure that we have a full understanding of what that actually looks like for the employees that are here. And I guess the second thing that I would say is just sort of a comment on, on today, it was very different for me. I, I always say this, that a budget, you know, tells the story of an organization. It tells the story of what the year will look like to come and it tells the story of an organization's values. This is a different year in budgeting than I think that we've seen before. And it seems like so far, a little bit of a sadder story, but I'm not convinced that it is a sad story. I feel like it's actually sort of incomplete. And I know that there's lots of different departments that don't have lots of things that they're adding, no new projects, no new staff members. But I still believe that every single one of our departments is doing something important at the city. And they're probably doing something this year that they weren't doing last year. They probably have something that they're excited about, something that they're working on. And I do think that that is important to know in this budget making process and to really for all these council members to have a grasp, because we're looking at a lot of different things and it's nice to know what your plans are going to be. What are those things that are going to be excited about? So then when it comes up again in the future, we sort of know what you've been working on. So I know that like we've gotten through this first meeting and usually we would have had more people present. I think that's what I would have preferred. But I know that there's still some uncertainty, so, and you know, some not as, you know, bigger projects maybe in the past, so I get it. But I still think that there's a missed opportunity if we don't get the story of each department, what they're doing with their budget, the important work that's going on there that's been approved in years past, that's maybe coming to fruition this year. Because we need those types of reminders for all of our different council members up here to be able to make these decisions. So I would request that as we move forward, that there are some more additional opportunities to really learn the story of each of our different departments budget and to be able to ask them questions so that we really have a full understanding of what we're passing.
Madam Mayor. Thank you, Courtney. Just a couple of other things I wanted to tack on for forestry. Just kind of curious how our new modern zoning code is affecting workload with our new, the new provisions in there that, that handle tree management, yes, and mitigation during the planning process. And then I'd also just be curious what kinds of things we can do to kind of report back on essentially FTEs gained by optimization and how we are, you know, but whatever the, the project is, we talked about the police technology optimization today, and I think another one, but how we're tracking those as potentially additional units that likely are going to need, you know, the, the original FTEs are going to need to be maintained to handle all the growth or maybe other issues and challenges. But it'd be good to be able to capture that growth that is happening that we, that we want to happen to help with all these things. So I don't know if there's, there's a way to do that, but some, some sort of way that we can kind of see how we're growing by doing things more efficiently.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, council members. Thanks for the staff that has hung in there. I appreciate all the effort that's gone in today and I will follow up on these items.
Thanks, everybody.
Madam Mayor, I move, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? We are adjourned.